All right, welcome and good evening, everyone. This June 28th meeting of the City Council is hereby called to order at 7:30. Would you all please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
.................................
And will the clerk please call roll?
Mikhail.
Here.
Budmans.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Beniziano.
Here.
Bessesi.
Here.
Reyes.
Here.
Sunaka.
Here.
With seven present and no one absent, there is a quorum this evening. Therefore, members of the audience are reminded that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcasts over the city's cable television channel as well as our other media platforms. Looks like the first item on our agenda is to approve minutes from a previous meeting. There's only one set of minutes to approve tonight, and that set of minutes is for a City Council meeting which occurred on June 14th, 2022. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman Bessesi, for the second. Does anyone wish to request any corrections, additions, or deletions to this set of minutes? Okay, seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. Now, it appears that there are two items which we'll address by deviating from our regular agenda, and the first item is a fiscal year 2021 city audit shared by Finance Director Tockington, and the second item is an actuarial discussion on police and fire pensions, which is also presented by Finance Director Tockington. Is there a motion to deviate from the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sunaka. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. All those in favor of deviating say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. We'll deviate from the agenda, and Finance Director Tockington, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. We have our auditors here from Waterbuck and Ammon. They audit annually our city finances and give us a report of how we're doing through the year. Tonight, we have Don Shaw of Waterbuck and Ammon here to present the audit, so I'll hand it over to you.
All right. Thank you for having me. I first would like to thank Molly, Shelley, Tom, and the entire team for making this another successful audit year, so much appreciated. Without that help, this is not possible, so thank you. First, going to go through the annual financial report with you, which is the thicker of the packets you received, and if you turn to page 14, you'll find the certificate of achievement award. This award was provided for the 2020 audit year. We have applied for and expect to receive the same award in 2021, so congratulations on receiving that award. If you turn about two or three more pages, you'll find our Waterbuck and Ammon letterhead. This is our independent audit report in which we provide a clean, unmodified opinion. That's the highest opinion you may receive. Basically states that we found no issues with internal controls or the numbers as they're presented that would otherwise alter our opinion. The management discussion and analysis will begin on page 21, and the management discussion and analysis really provides a summary of how the year performed in narrative form, so if you have any questions on fluctuations from year to year or what the numbers truly mean, this is where you would want to go to find those answers. Your individual fund financial statements will begin on pages 46 and 47, and it starts off with your balance sheet. Towards the bottom of page 47, on the far right column, you'll notice the total fund balance for your governmental funds was at $16.3 million. Eighty percent, or 13 million, is related to your general fund, which is your main operating fund. To see how this fund performed in the current year, we can skip ahead to what would be your income statement, which is on page 50. Towards the bottom of page 50, you'll notice that the general fund had a net increase of about $2 million. This is primarily due to your revenues coming in higher than anticipated and your expenditures being below budget in the current year. The notes to the financial statement will begin on page 60, and the notes really provide further detail into how we came up with the figures that we did with supporting schedules. Within there, you're going to find your capital asset and your long-term debt schedules. Not going to go through the notes with you tonight. I'm going to stay on your good side, and I'm going to have you jump all the way to page 129.
Ooh.
Yeah. Like I said, I want to bore you all night, so don't worry. Page 129 is the start of your budgetary information, so if you want to see how a specific fund performed based on what was budgeted, this is where you'd want to go. And you'll notice on page 129, your revenues came in higher than what was budgeted, and your expenditures came in below budget, which, as I mentioned, contributed to that net increase in the current year for the general fund. Does anyone have any questions on the financial statements before moving on?
No, thank you.
Okay, real quick, we also did provide a second document with the management letter. We did have one current year recommendation, and that's in regards to GASB 87, which is a change in how leases are going to be reported, so we'll be working with Molly and her team on that implementation next year. And of the five prior-year recommendations, one was implemented this year, so that's going to go away in next year's audit, and of the four remaining, we'll look into those next year for implementation. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, if not, I'll turn it over to Kevin to go through the actuary reports.
Thank you, Don. Before I begin going over the actuarial reports for tonight, I just wanted to see, I did bring paper copies of my presentation for the fire and police pension funds tonight. Does anybody prefer a paper copy? I think everybody has it in your meeting packet. It's in page 486, I believe, of your meeting packet, if you want to turn to there. Anybody else want to experience the joys of... All right. So just by way of introduction, my name's Kevin Kavanaugh. I've been to your City Council meetings before, so some of you may recognize me, so thanks for having me back here again this year. I'm here tonight to go over the Fire and Police Pension Fund Actuarial Reporting. We do do four reports for the Fire and Police Pension Funds for the city of Rolling Meadows. That includes for each the Fire and Police an actuarial funding report, as well as a GASB 6768 report. So much of the information you see that's included in your audit comes from that GASB 6768 report, but the main focus of my discussion tonight will be regarding the funding report. Really, the purpose of that actuarial report is to determine a recommended contribution for the city to make to the Fire and Police Pension Funds to fund up future benefits that those members are entitled to. So coming into this year's valuation, if you turn to page two of my presentation, which should be page 487 of your meeting packet, you can see the bottom-line results for this year. And so we are looking at a fairly substantial reduction in the recommended contribution for both the Fire and Police Pension Funds. This year, we recommend a combined contribution between Fire and Police of $7,177,251. Compared against last year, we recommended $7,882,767. We're looking at a net decrease of about nine percent, and that's about a $705,000 decrease year over year. Slightly larger decrease on the police side compared to fire, and I'll go into those reasons for the decrease in just a moment. If we look at some of the other metrics shown on this page, you can see the unfunded liability, which has substantially decreased year over year. This is in large part due to favorable investment returns experienced by the funds. We measure financial activity through December 31st of 2021, and so that happened to be a pretty ideal cutoff date, didn't experience a lot of the volatility that we've seen in the market so far this year. The funded percentage of both funds is up this year. For the fire side, ending the fiscal year about 58% funded, and on the police side, about 66% funded. Turning to that next slide, this really highlights the year-over-year changes that we saw for both fire and police. So coming into this year, we expected to see an increase combined amount of about a quarter of a million dollars. That's just based on the way the funding policy is structured. As we come in and do this year's actuarial valuation, there's a few different factors that will either bring that number up or down. And so you did see salary increases. On the fire side, came in greater than expected. On the police side, a bit less than expected, was a net increase year over year of $2,300 on the contribution. The next item is the actuarial experience, so that consists of all the demographic activity for both of the funds during the fiscal year, as well as any updates that we make to our actuarial valuation on an annual basis. That was a net reduction for both funds of $558,000 this year. Next, we see asset returns that came in greater than expected for a net reduction of $401,000 for the fiscal year. And finally, contributions from the city have come in over expectations, slightly for the fire pension fund, and just a little bit below expectations for the police pension fund. Basically, the city made a contribution that was about 101% of expectation for fire and 99% for police, so you see the net reduction year over year for that impact of 5,100 for the total net reduction year over year of 706,000 in the bottom corner there. For the rest of the report, I'll kind of quickly highlight some of the key points, but I don't want to drag on the presentation forever. I want to give the council a chance to ask any questions you may have of me as well. So on page four, you can see a breakdown of the recommended contribution into its constituent parts, the first of which is the employer normal cost. That's the cost of benefit accrual for all the active members within the pension funds. It's independent of funded status, so even if the funds were 100% funded, this normal cost would remain the same. The other piece here is the payment towards unfunded liability, which is about 80% of this year's recommended contribution for both fire and police, and so you can see the breakdown on this page. Slide five will detail out the demographic activity we saw in the fire pension fund for the year, most notably, one new hire, a couple retirements, and that was really the main demographic changes we saw. On the police side, we did see two new hires, a retirement, a termination, and a surviving spouse who passed away, and so we've reflected that in this year's valuation. Slide seven is showing you an agent service distribution of the fire fund membership. So one thing to kind of look at with this exhibit is, as you move down and to the right, those are the members that are approaching that retirement eligibility. When we do our actuarial valuation, we're always taking into account upcoming retirement eligibility, making sure that the city is as well-funded to pay those future benefits that we expect to see. You'll see a similar chart for police on page eight. Page nine, we move into the information that actually would tie out or correspond to what's in your audit report. There's just a change in fair value of assets for both the fire and police pension funds. Really, the most notable thing on this page that I would highlight is the return for the fiscal year. I already mentioned, returns were stellar for the fiscal year ended December 31, 2021. You see it materialized on this page. The funds had a combined investment return for the fiscal year of almost $15 million. That's money that saves taxpayers in the long run, and that's really demonstrates the purpose of these pension funds over time. The returns are listed in that text box to the right. Fire returned about 14.44% net of administrative expenses, and police was at 14.08. For reference, we do expect those returns to come in at about 7% for both of the funds, so the funds basically doubled expectation on investment returns during this past fiscal year, so very favorable. Slide 10 will show you a projection of future benefit payments for both fire and police. And really, the only thing I would highlight here is the benefit payments over time are relatively stable compared to most pension funds that we see in the state of Illinois. These numbers might look shocking in terms of the increases, but that's actually pretty modest compared to most municipalities we see. So benefit payments last year for fire and police combined was about $8.7 million, and if we were to fast-forward 10 years in time, we'd expect both of these funds to be paying out just over $13 million in benefit payments annually. Just one of the reasons why it's important to keep these pension funds funded on a long-term Slide 11 will show you the risk metrics that we look at for both of the fire and police pension funds. And so one of the metrics we're always looking at, and you've probably heard me say it in the past years, is that we compare the total value of assets against the liability associated with the inactive members. In an ideal world, basically, the liability that's attributable to inactive members, namely, you know, retired members, disabled, surviving spouses, would already be funded for. Right now, as of this year's valuation, both funds don't have all of that money set aside, which basically means that their funds are going to be reliant upon future cash inflows to pay future benefit payments. So that means that without, just investment earnings alone is not going to be enough. The employee contributions, as well as the contributions that the city makes, is going to be the key to future success for both the fire and police pension funds. Another metric we look at to assess that is the ratio of benefit payments to the market value of assets. With the fire pension fund coming in at 7.91, you can think of it as effectively the fire pension fund pays out almost 8% of the total pension fund value in benefit payments on an annual basis. It's expected to earn on investments alone 7%, so you can see how the 7% wouldn't be expected to be enough to cover benefit payments on an annual basis, especially as those start to increase. Similar on the police side, but you're on kind of the right side of the equation. On the police side, the fund pays out about 6.8% of the total value in benefit payments compared to the expected return of seven, so there's less reliance upon future contributions to maintain a good funded status there. And finally, these last bullet points for both of the funds, we provide this as a sensitivity figure for the cities, basically for your information and for your knowledge. Right now, one of the most hot topics in pension is the expected rate of return on investments. For those of you who may not be familiar with pension consolidation, both the fire and police pension funds, for investment purposes, all of the downstate Illinois police and fire pension funds are being consolidated into two big funds, one for fire, one for police. The underlying idea is that it should help to support higher expected rates of return. On the fire side, we've seen, they've approved an expected rate of return for the fire consolidated fund of 7.125%. On the police side, still remains to be seen what that final assumption will end up being, but you guys being at 7%, you're kind of right in line with what those expectations should be. If you did consider potentially reducing the expected rate of return, you can see the impact here of making a 25-basis-point reduction. So basically, if we were to instead assume that funds in the future return 6.75% instead of the 7% we currently use, you'd be seeing approximately a 7% to 9% increase to the recommended contribution as showed in those figures at the bottom. Translates to about $220,000 to $290,000 impact on the recommended contribution, if that change was made hypothetically. Important to understand how sensitive the recommended contribution can be to that assumption. It's a very important one in the actuarial process. Moving along to page 12, we get into the calculation according to state statute, and so state statute says that the city must make a contribution to these pension funds on an annual basis at least equal to an amount to achieve 90% funded by the year 2040. So what we do when we run these numbers is, we basically implement that as a funding policy to see what those numbers would come in at. Compared to our recommendation, which is effectively targeting 100% funding in 15 years, these numbers are targeting 90% funding in 19 years. So it's four more years of funding relief and 10% less in terms of what you're targeting for a funded percentage. Leads to a substantially lower contribution. For fire, comes in just below $2.7 million. For police, it's just below $2.3 million. That's about $2.2 million less in aggregate across both funds. Not a recommended funding policy because ultimately, by funding according to statutory minimum principles, it's going to lead to increasing unfunded liabilities over time, and ultimately, not the most efficient way to fund the pension funds. And then just wrapping up with my last few comments on the last four pages here, which are from the GASB 6768 report, all this information is basically transcribed into the audit report. And what you can see on page 13 is a five-year history for the fire pension fund of how much the city's contributed. We compare that against the recommended contribution, and we true that up for timing. And so you can see over the last five years, on average, the city contributes over 100% of the recommended contribution. For the fire pension fund, on average, 108%. In this past year, the village did about 101% of the recommendation. And on the police side, the five-year average is as well, 108.5%, and last year, the city put in 99% of that recommended contribution. So certainly, if there was any concerns about the city not doing their part to fund the pension fund, this exhibit goes a long way towards showing that the city has supported these pension funds over time, at least over the last five years, for sure. And then just wrapping up with pages 15 and 16, this is what we call our solvency test for the fire and police pension funds, and ultimately, what this is, is an 80-year projection of future cash flows, results in a positive result, effectively saying that the pension funds are expected to be fully solvent or able to pay all future benefit payments for current membership. So that's the ideal result that you're looking for with the GASB reporting. I can hit you guys with a lot of information really quick, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Any questions from the council? Alderman Budmans?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So given this year's anticipated financial, I mean, if we were to stop the market today and end the year today, would it be foolish of us to reduce our pension set-asides, seeing that we could be, in theory, buying low?
It's a very valid point. As of right now, it looks like returns so far through this fiscal year, from what I've seen from most funds, averaging about negative 7% year-to-date. That was as of a few weeks ago, so maybe things have changed a little bit. And so that being said, there is some measures that we take from an actuarial standpoint to try to manage that volatility. Basically, one of the mechanisms that we use is called the actuarial value of assets. So instead of reporting everything in a market value basis, which can be very volatile over time, we blend in the impact of each year's investment performance over a five-year period, so that that way reduces the volatility of the contribution. But that being said, we can probably expect to see returns not meeting expectations this year, so to the extent that extra money can be added, or potentially, if the contribution could stay the same as the prior year instead of taking on a decrease, that will always help to insulate the pension fund in the future, reduces investment risk, and in the long run, assuming returns come into expectations, that should save taxpayers' money by having the interest accrual on the assets in the pension fund.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Alderman Sunaka?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I know that there was a lot of information here, and we have the packets in front of us, but for anyone who's watching at home or who's going to stream, who will stream this later, can we have a member from the city let any resident know where they can see these numbers and reach out to us if they have questions?
Sure, great. We have hard copies will be final after this meeting, so we'll have some available at City Hall in the Finance Department, and I will send a copy over to the library, so they should have a copy, a hard copy there. Otherwise, it is attached to this agenda on the city's website and will be posted in final version in the transparency portal.
Thank you so much, Finance Director Tockington. And then I also want to just make sure that any residents who are listening to this understand that there are consequences for the municipality for not funding pensions, so this, if we, earlier, we had our auditor describe the, a slide which showcases our contributions being above 100% of the recommended contribution over the course of five years on average, for that five-year average. And the reason why that that's powerful or important for us is because it's demonstrating us working towards funding 100% of that fund over time, and perhaps our auditor or perhaps our city attorney can talk a little bit more about what the consequences would be if we weren't to do that.
Yeah, I can make a couple brief comments about that. Something to consider, when I went over that solvency projection, which is on pages 15 and 16 of the presentation, this is showing you that, as I mentioned, an 80-year projection of cash flows. One of the most important things that we have to estimate when we do these projections is how much the city will contribute in the future. That's a big variable in this process. Some municipalities out there decide not to fund at recommended levels, some fund at statutory minimum levels, some fund somewhere in between, some do even more. We've seen the whole gamut. Ultimately, we rely upon that five-year history of employer contributions into the pension funds to project out what we expect to see in the future. So the fact that we see a strong average over 100% from the city over the last five years, effectively, as you can imagine, if we continue to assume that the city will, on average, contribute over 100% of whatever we recommend, and we're determining a contribution of an amount necessary to attain 100% funded, that results in this positive result for the city, or this projection of full solvency, which is what you're looking for. Alternatively, if we saw from the city a history of underfunding the pension fund, let's say, for example, the five-year average came in at 90%, that will tell us that over time, eventually, that's going to lead to a shortfall. The pension funds will run out of money and not be able to pay all future benefit payments. The implications that can have for the city is then, when you go to do your financial statement reporting, and you report your net pension liabilities that end up in the audit, which is consumed by bond rating agencies as well as other outside parties, they'll see that the funds are projected to become insolvent, and it counts, it's basically a ding against the city. It can affect interest rates that the city has given on lending, and it can really have negative financial implications... negative financial implications to the city. And besides that, it can actually just increase the liability on the balance sheet for the city's financial statements. So those are some of the potential negative ramifications of underfunding that luckily, because the city has done a great job in funding these pension funds, you guys don't have to look at today in your, in your report.
Thank you.
Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. One question along those lines, too, is just looking at the great information that you put together demographic-wise, and we might, we might not have the history to do it yet, but regrettably, what's going on in the police force industry, mass exodus that's routine taking place? Just looking, we have the same situation with fire here, just based on numbers, and looking at the demographics, have we seen anything in your expertise? We have, if my numbers, my, just my quick math is correctly, about 22 officers that are between the 40 and 45-year range, and getting close to that retirement age, and about 17 firefighters. More specific to police, just based on what's going on in the law enforcement industry, have you, or in your expertise, like, is that taken into account? I know you just had the five-year trend, but we've got, almost half of our sworn officers are getting to that point where they'll be 50 years old and enough time to retire in terms of, that could be a quick draw on the pension.
Yeah, that's a great question. Something that we do constantly analyze that assumption, generally, we do an update to the actuarial assumptions every three to five years. And so ultimately, in terms of recent trends that we maybe have seen in the last year or two, related to some of the uprest we've seen, that technically is really not reflected in terms of what we see here. Once we see the data and we're able to kind of do a look back and say, have we seen any material difference in terms of when people are retiring now compared to what it looked like five years ago, we could potentially make some updates there. To the extent that members do retire young, generally results in an increase to the contribution. So if you're seeing members, as soon as they hit that retirement eligibility, they start drawing a benefit from the pension fund, generally, that's going to result in an increase to the unfunded liability and an increase to what the city needs to contribute into the pension fund. So certainly, a very relevant topic, something we're keeping an eye on next year or two. I think we'll be able to actually have the data to be able to support potentially making a change or updating that assumption. But at this point in time, it's kind of, a kind of a work in progress, and we take on those actuarial experience as it occurs. So if that happens, yeah.
Great, no, thank you very much. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further, Alderman Vinesiano?
Thank you. So I have a couple part question to this. Can you explain to us and to our residents how contributions are made initially from the city? And that'll lead kind of into more of my questions.
Sure, I'll speak to it a little bit. Molly might even be able to elaborate better than me. But my understanding would effectively be, we come forth with a recommended contribution we present to the city council tonight. This is the December 31st, 2021 actuarial report. The intention with this presentation tonight, and on a going-forward basis, would be for the city to rely upon this information for the upcoming tax levy. Typically, that takes place in November, December of each year. Then, going forward, those, those tax monies will be collected during the following calendar year. So this 12/31/2021 report, we'd expect to see these contributions actually deposited into the pension fund by 12/31 of 2023. Does that help enough, or are you looking for more detail?
Yep, no, that's perfect. So this leads into my second part of my question. Seeing that the market is so volatile this, you know, year, and we've kind of seen that we really don't know what's going to happen over this next year, if the council so chooses to not take this decrease at this point and kind of leave things as is, are we allowed to leave these funds for now, wherever they may be in our general fund, or wherever they sit in our funds, and make this contribution at a later time before whatever that cutoff date is, to kind of wait and see what better time it would be to make that contribution if we so choose not to make this decrease at that time?
Yeah, interesting concept. From an actuarial standpoint, in terms of, from my perspective, I think that would be a decision up to the discretion of the city. In terms of what legal basis does the city need to use to determine a contribution, as long as the city's making more than what the statutory minimum is, you're in compliance with the law. Ultimately, how the city decides to fund these benefits, whether that be, I've seen it done a ton of different ways, general funds, tax levies, electric use tax, gambling revenues, gas tax, really at the discretion of the city and the discussions the city council has. And so we'll defer to you on that. And ultimately, in terms of what you would see in the actuarial reporting, if we saw those contributions come in, in the expected timeframe, right, with, by fiscal year in 2023, whether that happened via a tax levy or via a general fund contribution later on, ultimately, wouldn't make any difference for the actuarial process.
Okay. Mayor, I'd like to jump in.
Go ahead.
So if we levy on the tax levy, so we do, you know, keep it at the same rate we had on the levy last year, and that's what we levy for the, you know, the upcoming levy, that funding would have to be transferred because it's part of the levy, so once you've designated it in the levy, we do have to then spend it against that use. Now, where he brought up, there's other funding sources. If we lowered the tax levy and identified funding from somewhere else, that could be on a different timeframe. But once you've levied that funding, then we need to turn around and process that levy funding in that following year. So when we get the disbursement from the county, we would turn around and give it to the pension.
Okay. And what is that, what do those dates look like to be able to, or that we would be required to disperse the money?
So typically, we get the two payments, one
January?
Yeah, and then the second one is usually occurred, or will be occurring, but actually, right now, is delayed to December, or it might be later. So on the typical schedule, we would get one, you know, early in the beginning of the calendar year, and we disperse that portion of the taxes, and then we get the second disbursement of the property taxes, and we would then transfer the taxes then. So it's usually early fall, or, you know, late summer, early fall that that second installment would occur. But whenever it occurs, so even if this one, right now, where Cook County says it's going to be late, whenever we receive it, we need to then turn it around to the pension fund.
Okay. Manager Sabo, have you heard of other municipalities doing kind of what I'm proposing, is kind of waiting and watching? Because we all know that the market is a volatile market at this point, and I'm just, and I'm not a finance person, but to me, to, to go ahead and say, I think as a council member, I'm saying, like, I don't want to decrease because I think we're in a good spot and we're making good contributions, but at the same time, I don't want to disperse these funds just to know that it's not a great market to do so. So, I mean, what are our, kind of our options at this point?
Well, I think, as our auditors have mentioned, it ultimately is a policy decision of the council. The state has set forth statutorily that every community operating a police or, and/or fire pension fund needs to be making those minimum contributions. Certainly, it depends on where your, your funding status is at. And I know at the committee, the whole meeting last week, there was a presentation given and a recommendation that we continue to fund above where the actuarially recommended amount is. And that's in order to mitigate against a larger increase in future dates. And while there is market volatility, I think the pension funds do, do take into account diversification of their investment portfolio, to the extent that I think Alderman Budmets was, was sort of alluding to earlier, where on the equity side of the market, you may have an opportunity, and certainly, we can't time it, but you may have an opportunity to pick up certain equities at a lower rate that may have a higher return on investment in future years, depending on where the market goes. But from a financially prudent standpoint, and from the staff recommended approach, in order to mitigate from any certain spikes or needs in the future, a more stable funding is, is our recommendation. Not taking into account necessarily market fluctuations, because we do know historically that the market does up and flow, up and down, and I think the, the recommendation also has taken into account that long-term factor of, of market fluctuation. So to answer your question, are there communities, I think every community is taking a different approach, depending on where their financial situation is, what their tax levy looks like, what their debt service payments and all the other contributions and factors that build into what the tax levy total amount is. But based on where we stand currently in our, our desire to reach that funding requirement by 2040, and knowing that we have less than 20 years, we want to make sure that we're not backloading our recommended or required funding to future years, which may look like much larger amounts, rather than doing it incrementally over a longer period of time.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from the council? No further questions? Well, thank you, gentlemen, for detailing the information in your reports, your respective reports. Thank you, Finance Director Tockington. Is there anything further from your end?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then with that, and the presentation's concluded, I'd like a member of the council to raise a motion to close the floor. I have that motion. Thank you, Alderman Budmets. Thank you, Alderman Vinesiano, for the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and we will close the floor and move on to the next agenda item. I do not have anything to report for the mayor's report this evening. Are there any ward reports? Alderman Budmets?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Received two different residents with items related to traffic concerns. One at Emerson and Rowling Road, where there's difficulty in seeing into the intersection for oncoming traffic northbound on Rowling Road. And then, one for speeding on Vermont, which seems to be an ongoing concern that's, may or may not be realistic based on traffic, or former speed studies, but to let both of those residents know that the traffic committee is looking at them and that, and that their, their concerns are being addressed. So that's, that's my report.
Thank you, Alderman Budmets. Alderman Basasi?
Yeah, I'd like to thank those that came out to the Ward Five Town Hall last week, or, what, on the 15th or whatever, whatever day it was. But I just wanted to say thank you to those that showed up. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Basasi. Any other ward reports this evening? Okay, seeing no further ward reports, the next item we'll move on to, there aren't any signatures on the sign-in sheet, so we'll move on to items pending. And we have one item pending on this line, item A. It's ordinance number 22-18, which was postponed from this year's May 24th city council meeting, seeking approval for a liquor license application for a Class A2 liquor license for Anna's Red Apple LLC, doing business as Anna's Red Apple, at 2121 South Plum Grove Road, for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman McHale. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Budmets?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today, I had a meeting at 4:30 for the traffic committee, followed by a meeting for the Capitol Committee at 6:30, so I was looking for a quick dinner. I went to Isabella's and found that, once again, their, their restaurant is closed or their kitchen is closed, and there was no food available at Isabella's for, for a quick meal. This seems to be an ongoing issue with, with some of the gaming facilities, that there's really not serving food. In short, it, it makes it seem like we're operating casinos in, in Rolling Meadows, rather than trying to assist our restaurants in, in staying open. And there are rest, for example, I went to Isabella's about three, four weeks ago, and asked if they had any food available, and the lady said, oh, no, but there's a restaurant next door. And, and the point is, is that when we approved, when we approved the gambling, it was to assist our restaurants, and when one of the gambling establishments that we approved tells me that there is in fact a restaurant next door, and that they don't even consider themselves as a restaurant, that's a problem. So I, I am going to be moving, actually encouraging you to not vote for this particular applicant's. They have, they have not demonstrated a regular systematic following of the rules, where other restaurants who are in town, who are, are trying to follow the rules and are using gambling to stay open and to augment their businesses, are, they're following the rules, and I think, I think it sets up a, a two-tiered system that's unfair. And so I, I cannot see rewarding this applicant with another gaming license when they haven't really, when they haven't really demonstrated good faith with their first, with their first license.
Thank you, Alderman Budmets. This subject is for a liquor license, and I understand the issues that, that you've observed with gaming. I have had a conversation with Manager Sabo about that, and we will be bringing to the committee at a whole discussion and potentially strict and severe consequences for those who violate that. But for this evening, I'd like to stick to discussion specifically about the Class A2 liquor license, and I understand where, the, the parallel you're drawing with that, but let's keep it on the liquor license.
And is this not the first step in getting the gaming license by having the A2 license?
Yes, but they've held a liquor license prior for many years, and they suspended it due to COVID. This is purely trying to bring back what they previously had, and they suspended it for financial reasons due to COVID and operations. If you don't want to approve it, that's fine, but the, the issues you raised during the discussion are a subject for another time, absolutely. Okay? Any further discussion? Alderman Vinesiano?
Thank you. Manager Sabo, can you tell us, if we have an applicant in the community that has multiple licenses, and they have violations at another location, what, what options do we have if applying for another application at another location?
It's my understanding that the code doesn't allude or connect license holders between different locations. Each individual license is issued to the applicant themselves or the business entity. So an individual who may have multiple businesses in town with multiple licenses, each license is tied to the respective individual business. If there were to be an enforcement action, that specific business that may be found in violation would be the sole focus of that enforcement action. Again, I can verify with our city attorney, but to my knowledge of the city code, there isn't a connect between a license held by one in violation and a license held by another business, even if that is held by the same individual.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Budmets, second bite.
Oh, please. So my understanding is, is that when we do liquor license applications, that we, we evaluate the, the applicant's integrity and how they would operate a business, and that, that part of that evaluation, but also, also consider how they operate other similar businesses, whether they be in Rolling Meadows or not. Is that correct? Chief?
I'm happy to take it. So as part of the applicant's background screening process, we evaluate any sort of criminal background or violation, or any sort of independent, excuse me, independent violations or criminal history of that individual applicant. The, the council certainly, as part of their policymaking authority, can take into account any other known violations or any other extenuating circumstances that may exist. On the staff side, our background review process evaluates the individual against any sort of criminal background history, and that information is presented to the council as part of the consideration process.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Budmets. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the rule?
Basasi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Sanica?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmets?
No.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Vinesiano?
Yes.
With six in favor and one opposed, this ordinance is adopted. All right, the next item on the agenda are the consent ordinances in for first reading. This consists of two items. They are items B and C. Does any Alderman wish to remove any of the items from the consent agenda of ordinances? Alderman O'Brien?
Item B, please, Mr. Mayor.
All right, then we'll just take these one at a time. All right, so beginning with line item, B, ordinance number 22-00, is grant approval for a special use authorizing a major amendment to the marketplace of Rolling Meadows Plan Development authorized by ordinance 00-16 for Lot 5, including a request for approval of preliminary and final plans to redevelop the site with a new 3,077 square foot Raising Cane's Restaurant with drive-through, including variations and other exceptions and zoning relief necessary to construct the project in accordance with the plans submitted at 1420 Golf Road. Now I look for a motion. Thank you, Alderman Vinesiano. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. Now, is there any discussion on this item?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just real briefly, I know Manager Sabo shared with us a few hours before the meeting. I had a question during the review regarding the illumination of the signage portion, because obviously, Raising Cane's is a great establishment that we're welcoming to the community, everything should pan out. There was just a question, though, around the lighting, and I didn't see that in the variance there. So I'd like to go ahead and make a recommendation. I have no problem with the lighting over in that neck of the woods, because it is retail, commercial, there are no residences over there. I've had some calls in the past, that's why I came to the light of me, also sitting on the planning zoning commission in the past, for businesses along Kirchhoff that do have residences. do have residential across the street, so that's why it was top of mind for me. I don't have a problem with them keeping their outside lights on, or even their inside lights on, since they're open till 11:30 or 3:30 a.m. accordingly. So just, I'd like to make a motion that we could modify the amendment by second reading to state, the illumination of the site signage shall comply with the requirements of the zoning code. However, should the business desire modified hours for such illumination, the zoning administrator is hereby authorized to review and approve such requests, so they could keep their, their lights on longer, since they've got longer hours.
I'll second that motion.
All right, thank you, Alderman Sanoyka, for the second. So with this amendment on the floor, is there any discussion on the amendment? Alderman Budmets?
Question on the amendment, so is that just for this particular application that we're giving the zoning administrator the power to do this? Because if I, if I own the McDonald's, I would probably want to have my lights on until 3:00 in the morning as well. So I'm just trying to figure out, is this a one-time shot, or is this across the board?
My understanding with the motion is, it's for this location specifically, this entity specifically, is that it would be for that way. And it would be 30 minutes, based on the current revised code, within their closing hours. So I'm with you, McDonald's, if they're open till 1:00 a.m., they should have their lights on till 1:00 a.m. But yes, it is to coincide with their hours of operation, but just this location.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the amendment?
Great question.
Okay. With no further discussion on the amendment, then I'll ask the clerk to call roll.
Reyes?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmets?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Besessi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, that item's been amended. Now we'll bring it back for a final vote here to move forward for second reading. So I'm, do I have to read the entire amendment with this here?
No, just say as amended.
Yeah, all right. So I'd like to take this ordinance number 22-00, granting approval for special use and authorizing a major amendment to the marketplace of Rolling Meadows Plan Development authorized by Ordinance Number 0016 for Lot 5, including request for approval, preliminary and final plans, redevelop the site with a new 3,077 square foot Raising Cane's Restaurant with drive-in, including variation and other exceptions and zoning relief necessary to the construct of the project in accordance with the plans submitted at 1420 Golf Road as amendment, as amended. Is there a motion to move this forward to second reading?
Some of them.
Thank you, Alderman McHale. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. Any discussion on it as amended? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sanoyka?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmets?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Besessi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinance moves forward for second reading.
Still moved, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Beniziano. Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, will the ordinance be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale?
Yes.
Budmets?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Besessi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinance moves forward for second reading. Now, moving on to new business, you'll see Item D for a motion to approve payment of bills on warrant for June 28, 2022. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
Some of them.
Thank you, Alderman McHale. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Beniziano, for the second. Is there any discussion of the bills on warrant? Okay, seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmets?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Besessi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. Following the new business, we arrive at the consent resolutions, and this consists of four items this evening. Those are Items E through H. Does any alderman wish to remove an item or items from the consent agenda for resolutions? Okay, seeing none, the chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the four resolutions using a single motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
Still moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. Beginning with line item E, Resolution Number 22-R-57, to award a contract for professional engineering services for the 2022 sanitary sewer rehabilitation program. Line item F, Resolution Number 22-R-58, to award a contract for a water system modeling and engineering service study, which is citywide. Line item G, Resolution Number 22-R-59, is to approve and authorize the execution of a permanent sidewalk easement agreement at 1200 Hicks Road. And finally, line item H, Resolution Number 22-R-60, is to approve and authorize the execution of a consent letter agreement between 99 LLC, operating as the Islamic Society of Northwest Suburbs, ISNS, and the city of Rolling Meadows for the property at 1200 Hicks Road. The question is, shall the four resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Besessi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmets?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the resolutions are adopted. That brings the council on to other business and reports. As you can see under the mayor's appointments, this consists of three appointments tonight. Does any alderman wish to remove any appointee from the appointment list for discussion? Okay, seeing none, the chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the reappointments by way of a single motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
Still moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Thank you, Alderman Besessi, for the second. So for the Library Board of Trustees reappointments, we have Jean Thredgill, Eunice Simple, and Mary Utterk. The question is, shall all three appointees be reappointed to the Library Board of Trustees? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Beniziano?
Yes.
Besessi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmets?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the three individuals are reappointed. I don't have any proclamations at this time. Is there anything for the city clerk to report?
No, not tonight.
Okay, thank you. Then we will arrive at the city staff reports. Let's go ahead and start with the community items of interest with Manager Sabo.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. The city's festive July 4th parade will be held on Monday, July 4th, at 11:30 a.m. along Owl Drive and ending at the Jewel Parking Lot on Kirchhoff Road. Later that evening, prepare to be amazed at the city's annual fireworks display shooting off from the community center backfield. Many great viewing areas from the centralized location, with many great viewing areas from the centralized location, happening at dusk on the 4th around 9:30 p.m. For more information, please visit the city's website at www.citirrm.org. As a reminder, the Rolling Meadows Police Department will be participating in the Independence Day Traffic Enforcement Campaign until July 5th. If alcohol will be a part of your July 4th festivities, please don't drink and drive. Rather, plan ahead to ensure you have a safe ride home. This month marks the 20th anniversary of the Rolling Meadows historical 1950s house and museum. Take a trip down Memory Lane and visit the Historical Museum on Sundays from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. or by appointment. Tours are free, and they're located at 3100 Central Road in Rolling Meadows. For more information, visit rollingmeadowsmuseum.com or call 847-577-7086. The fun continues on Friday, July 15th, at the Fridays Rock Concert in Kimball Hill Park. Bring your lawn chair and blanket to enjoy the opening band, The Jolly Ringwaltz, at 5:30 p.m., followed by Hello Weekend at 7:30 p.m. An assortment of food vendors will be on hand, and adult beverages will be served courtesy of Stadium Sports Club at this July's event. A special thank you again to the Rolling Meadows Park District for sponsoring the opening bands at this summer's Friday Rock Events, and for the use of their property. For questions or for more information, visit the city's website at citirrm.org. And that's it for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Sabo. If we look at the second line item there, number two, it's the May 2022 financials. And the financials, as you know, are in the packet. And if any member of the council has questions, please feel free to reach out and connect with Finance Director Talkington for these. And with that, let's swing on to the third item here, and visit the July 12th City Council's draft agenda. Manager Sabo?
Thank you, Mayor. The draft agenda is included in the agenda packet. A few highlights include the second readings of ordinances approved at this evening. We will have the first reading of the city's ward map update, and that's related to the 2020 decennial census change in our population. In addition, a couple other items include a follow-up from a committee of the whole meeting related to a city code amendment to allow us to find and conduct enforcement for illicit discharges into city storm sewers, as well as a code amendment to prorate liquor license fees, so that we can adjust our licensing to a January to December timeline, as well as an IGA with the Park District for the mural on Kirchhoff Road, as well as a few others. As of right now, again, this is a draft agenda. The final agenda will be posted to the city's website in accordance with the Open Meetings Act once finalized. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Sabo. This brings us to matters not on the agenda, and I want to revisit, Alderman Budmets, the conversation that you brought up while we were going through the liquor license. Two weeks ago now, maybe, yeah, two weeks ago, Manager Sabo and I had a conversation, understanding that there has been observations of these facilities that have the privileged gaming license and are not serving food. As a result, we will be having a committee of the whole discussion on how to penalize these entities and these institutions for that reason. This is a privilege to have the gaming license, and I don't want to see these businesses abusing that privilege. So just, so we're all aware that we will have a future conversation on that. Any other matters not on this evening's agenda? Alderman Sanoyka, Beniziano?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make an announcement to the community that the Rolling Meadows Environmental Committee will be having a workshop tomorrow, on the 29th, at 6:00 p.m. in the Emergency Operations Center, to discuss the beginnings of a citywide sustainability plan. So for any of those who would like to participate in that workshop, they're welcome to come. Otherwise, it will be the committee members that will be meeting tomorrow. Thank you.
Very exciting. Alderman Beniziano?
Thank you. I did forget, in my ward report, for the residents, a couple did reach out. For grouse in New Wilkie, this will be our first holiday with the police force. We'll have sign up for traffic. We know we get confused with people that come into town on actual New Wilkie and Old New Wilkie. We know it's very confusing unless you live here. But we will make sure that we have signage and directing traffic in that area to prevent any going down in that court down there and get confused and extra traffic. So that will happen this 4th of July. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Beniziano. Any other matters not on this evening's agenda? Okay, without any other matters not on the agenda, and without any closed session items to discuss, I would like to look for a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Thank you, Alderman Beniziano, for the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This meeting's adjourned, so have a wonderful evening and a safe 4th of July holiday.